Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Mr. Dennis, you're going to be the public today?
No, sir, we're good today.
You're good today? All righty.
Markings at a premium, I will pay you.
Maybe we should have an attendant out there and help out with the county's budget then. Just kidding. Let's see, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
Still moved.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, the purchase order log, any questions for Tracy?
I don't remember where it is. Wait down there. Something was paid for a failing septic system or something?
No, it was a septic system cleaning at the property you own in Pickle Court in Paradise.
Oh, never mind.
There was a mistake in process there. Long story short, septic pumpers don't bill people even if you are the government. So when they showed up to perform the task at hand, just happened Alan Hart who lives there was there, so he paid it and we were reimbursing him for that.
Oh, okay. Was it just a maintenance set issue?
It was, we do it about every two years down there. It wasn't the first time you've done it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, no internal budget revisions. I have a few changes in status received from the Honorable Attorney Petrusi, County Clerk, for changes in job duties for the County Clerk's Office employees affected November the 1st through 2024 are the following. John Alderton from 50,002-0339 to 46,002-0339. Mary Hayward from 45-788-30 to 46-778-30. Jennifer Miller from 50,000-80 to 51,080. Amanda Perez from 49,053.6 to 50,053.6. Susie Wynden from 48,070 to 49,078. Change in status received from Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator, effective November the 1st, 2024, for temporary 10% salary increase for taking on additional duties. Christine Lavardi, Emergency Communications, from 40,0278 to 44,00306. Steve Abreg, Engineering Department, from 89,00202 to 98,123. Change in status received from Chad Weinbrenner for Tracy McCormick.
You left off Tyler Moser.
They're in different order. They're in different order, okay, I got it, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, now I'm lost. Thank you. What was that, Christine Lavardi?
That's where you were.
Okay, Emergency Communications from 40,0278 to 44,00306. Steve Abreg, I did do that, okay. Change in status received from Chad Weinbrenner for Tracy McCormick. County Commission Office to move from full-time 40 hours a week to full-time 32 hours per week, effective November the 1st, 2024, with a salary change from 61,113.30 to 48,888.82. Change in status received from the Honorable Sheriff, Rob Blair, for Tyler Moser, for graduating from the academy, effective October the 12th, 2024, with a salary change from 52,466 to 54,187. Letter of resignation received from the County Clerk's Office for Sherry Horvath, effective November the 1st, 2024. Letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Department for Sean Roberts?
Robinson.
Robinson.
Roberts, I had your correction.
It's the correction.
Okay, effective October 22nd, 2024. And that's all the changes in status and we need to have approval of the minutes and councilperson or Commissioner Barnhart was not present, so I need a motion to approve October 10th, 2024 minutes.
Still moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, and everybody was here for the October 17th, and we have one abstention from Mr. Barnhart. We have a stop payment and canceled check request from the County Clerk's Office of Finance, and that's the end of that, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. And now we have Mr. Honorable Larry Hess from the Assessors' Office for Correction of Assessment Logs.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you, sir?
Oh, pretty good, I believe so.
Good.
Had a couple extra this week as we've had a couple weeks piled up, so. First thing I have is taxpayer air. We have four of them we had to bring over for two of them that didn't mark their vehicles out and the other two were just same thing pretty much, but those four adds up to $1,444.95 for those.
We had $1,144.
$1,144, I'm sorry.
All righty, can I have a motion to approve the four personal tax exonerations for taxpayer air?
Still moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Like sign opposed?
No.
Motion declined.
Good, thank you. For office air, personal property, have a total of 20 this week, and for the reasons that's listed there, they, let me get my third one here, they total up to $13,054.53.
All righty, do I have a motion for, I'm sorry?
Explain Joanne McMahon.
Okay, which one was that?
Exonerate per Larry, no homestead. The first page, near the bottom.
Uh huh.
Okay, let's see. No homestead, yeah, she did not have homestead listed on her property.
Oh, it's simply a homestead.
Just wasn't put on.
Oh, okay.
So we had to correct.
It didn't make sense the way they had it here.
Yeah, sometimes they just make a note there, but she didn't get the homestead, so we had to add it, so corrected it.
Okay.
Okay.
So now can I have a motion to approve the 20 personal taxpayer exonerations for reason office air?
Still moved.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, and one real estate exoneration.
Yeah, it was for Harry Baird, he had a commercial building that was on a commercial card and he had other parcels with his house on it on a residential card. We were going to move those over last year and they didn't get moved over, so they stayed on the commercial card, they should have been changed, but we had to correct that for, it was $840.88 for that one.
All righty, can I have a motion for the real estate tax exoneration?
Still moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is that the same Harry Baird that is consolidating his property?
Yeah, uh huh, same one, yeah.
Same property?
Same property, yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, and two applications for consolidation of properties.
Okay, yes, sir. First one I have is for Harry Baird, same Harry Baird, that parcel that was on commercial, we had moving into the residential cards. For those two parcels, they were in the Jerrystown District, MAP 26, Parcel 39 and Parcel 43.4, so we got those, we need those approved so we can get them all put together for him.
All righty, can I have a motion to approve the two applications for consolidation of properties?
Still moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I didn't read the second one off yet, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do them both at the same time?
Yeah.
That's for Narcissa Arenas, I'm sure that's probably wrong, but had two parcels in Mill Creek District, MAP 9M and MAP 9, Parcel 1.3 and Parcel 67. We just put them together so she could get one tax bill.
Now can I have a re-motion for the two real estate consolidations?
I will re-motion.
Okay, and then a second?
I will re-second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, and two applications for consolidation of properties.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Larry, I have a question about the consolidation, just because like in certain subdivisions, for example, I don't know, will this affect that, like with each lot that's there has to pay an HOA fee, if they consolidate those two properties, could that go back to one?
No.
No?
What happens with the exoneration, it's done for tax purposes, but it doesn't change the plats or anything at the courthouse.
Community consolidation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, consolidation. It's still recorded the same way, they would still own two separate lots and unless there's something in a subdivision that came up with their own rule about that, it'd be still two separate lots. This is just for tax purposes, for billing purposes.
Okay. Any other questions for Larry? All right, Larry, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board of meeting reports, Mr. Boyd?
I had a couple meetings this week. One day I had a Main Street meeting. Good bit going on there here coming up on the holidays. This weekend is the Fall Food Fest downtown. They have interest on page looking upwards of 6,000 people, they're hoping to get somewhere close to that out there for that event. It is set up and ready to go this weekend. November 30th, they have the tree lighting. This year it'll be a little bit different, it's from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, a one-hour event, it's not going to be tied into the Christmas parade and the downtown Christmas on Main or any of that, it's just a thing on its own for one hour on November 30th. Then December 3rd is the Christmas parade, it'll come straight down Queen Street from the high school to Race Street and it's paid at that point. And then, oh, November 7th, they're always looking for people for an event to put up lights, help put in new bulbs and all that to decorate. And they have three businesses that came together in sponsorship and I think that is for, don't quote me on this, but I think that's for the Christmas on Main, and that's Art McBee, The Haven, and Smile Designs. They combined to be the headlining sponsor there for $10,000 for that event this year. The Ambassador Program has been doing okay, this is a tie between CVB and the Main Street and the City of Martinsburg, so we talked about it in both meetings, I had both meetings this week, I had Main Street on Monday and I had CVB on Wednesday, so there are some things with the Ambassador Program, so we'll just move over to the CVB meeting. They did agree to pay the second half of that money, the program has been moved in the right direction, it got a little bit of a slow start, as everybody knows it's hard to find good employees and different things, so to really get it off the ground, they didn't use as much money early, so it's going to extend a little bit, but they voted to go ahead and fund the second half, that they agree that the first half did somewhat what it was supposed to do. I'm meeting with Shane, with the city, and also with Robbie from Main Street to go over some changes that could be done there to make the program a little better and stand out a little bit more, give it a little more depth and perception to the public. So that program is still a go, they still have to vote whether they'll fund it for next year, but the, is it the street safety grant? Which one is it the city is going for for the trails and the different things? It's, but, yeah, either way, that grant, they won't fund this program, they tried to get this funded under that, they, that's one of the things they told them to scratch from the grant application evidently, so. Ambassador Program, they're hoping that the CVB will fund it for a second year, moving in now that they have good ambassadors in place and they've got it rolling, and that was the plan originally, if it went well for the CVB to pay for it for two years, but the third year it was supposed to be picked up by the grant. Now they're going to go looking for a different grant that may cover it for the third year. But like I said, CVB still hasn't voted, they'll vote, I believe, next month or the month after on whether they'll fund next year's portion of that. Hotel motel taxes are up, we are busier than anywhere else in the state, they're down everywhere else in the state, we're up. I think some of that has to do with construction and hotels being filled with workers in town and some different things like that, too. Even though our percentage is down, our hotel rooms are up, last year we had 1,200 hotel rooms, this year we have 1,426. So the percentage last year was 67.3, this year it's 58.9, but 200 and some more rooms, it's actually a higher rate than it was last year. The Airbnbs are up, they're at 41% this year, last year they were at 39.8%, and there are We were unique in that aspect as to where, when they were doing it in Morgantown, they had to pay a bunch of money to use the CAC Theater and all that. And then they had to even, if they picked somewhere else, they had to bring in more lighting and sound and all that, and this church has it all. So it comes in at a lower rate. They got $32,000 grant again for next year for that. And then Christmas on Main was approved for a $5,000 digital media grant. So that's the happenings of the CVB and the Main Street.
Very good. Nothing else, that's it?
That's all I've got right now. If I think of something, I'll come back to you.
Mr. Barnhart?
I can't top that, but I had a Board of Health meeting in Berkeley County. Departmental reports, EPI is, diseases are coming down, or that there's a rate that you would expect this time of year. Environmental report, the only place they had to close was, uh... What's the name of it? Olive Garden. Do it backed up, and it's closed for a weekend. Administrator report, everything is going well. Health officer report, everything is going well. New business, they're creating a job description for the health officer. Up till now, it's been, health officer does whatever he feels he, he needs to do, and that's pretty much it. But staff was complaining the health officer wouldn't put the time in that they needed, so he is currently endeavoring to do more, more time in the office. And then they, Lisa had a problem with County Commission and not interviewing the Health Department for the, uh... Thing last week. Guys went around the Parks and Rec and Ambulance Authority and all that.
For impact fees?
Yeah.
A state agency?
No, the guys from the impact fees.
Yeah, but, well...
Oh, the company that we hired, yeah.
Yeah, I told him, well, you know, you're kind of different from the Parks and Rec. And I said, well, talk to Gary if you want, you know, to be included, but, you know, that's up to her. She was rather upset because Buzz came home with talking about Parks and Rec, and she said, "Well, weren't we included?" And it's like, well...
Sure, they're identified as a funding source.
Yeah, well, that's what I tried to tell her. And also had a Water District meeting at the same time, but I didn't get out of the Board of Health meeting at 6 o'clock, so that was, like, scratched the Water District meeting. And that's all I, that's all I had.
Mr. Catlett?
When Carson Bice and Tishra Bice was here last week, I did learn a great deal about impact fees that I didn't realize, and it's not going to be as simple as we had hoped. But at the same time, I think it's a wonderful thing that we're pursuing this. On Sunday morning early, Commissioner Goguenar left and traveled to Huntington, West Virginia, on the far west side of the state, and had great weather down and back, and came back Monday afternoon. And we had our CCA WV Fall Board meeting there. Most of the discussion was about EMS and some volunteer fire as well, but EMS took up most of the discussion. And I just want to say, I feel very fortunate that we have the authority here in Berkeley County that we have, and they're as solvent as they are. Uh, there's a lot of counties that are really struggling with this, and, uh, and several do it through excess levies, and one particular county mentioned, and they just, after several failures, passed one by two votes. So, um, but, you know, you have to go and do it all over again in five years. So a lot, a lot of pressure on some, some of these counties, so... Of course, we got into legislative conversation for this coming session, and home rule will again be the top priority of the association. Also rollback, elimination of the rollback will be on that agenda as well again, so we're, we're pleased with that. And then yesterday I had a senior service meeting. Nothing to report, other than everything, things are going very well over there. Thank you.
Mr. Goguenar?
Yes, Mr. President, as with everybody else attending the groundbreaking of the Water District, the new plant in Bunker Hill, it was, it was very nice, and always, always good to have Senator Capito in the county. With, with the Water District, uh, great success. They're, they're doing a, a lot of work to try to improve the water infrastructure in our county. So, um, my hat's off to them, so, uh, came back to me...
You're helmeted at this point.
Well, your helmet.
But, well, I had my chin strap on, so it wouldn't fall off. I took a lot of, lot of heat over that.
You shouldn't have, sir.
I was getting beat up pretty bad. Anyway, I wasn't going to bring it up. I didn't want my helmet to fall from, Senator Capito was right next to me, so I was trying to impress her, I guess.
And we came back, we sat in on the impact fee discussions as well. And as, as Steve mentioned, we went to Huntington Sunday and Monday, and, um... You know, it's, it's, what I, what I really took away from that is I'm very fortunate for a lot of the things that we've already have in place here and how things operate. But I also appreciate Commissioner Catlett's work on the legislative, he's a legislative chair, and to be able to keep our efforts along with the rest of the state's efforts in the foresight. And thank you for getting our priorities moved, moved to the top. So I, I think that's it.
That is? All right. I had a Airport Authority meeting. Probably one of the biggest draws out of that was, is that the Jet A fuel sales are down, and it was through the, uh, through a conversation that Nick had with, at a meeting he was at, that during election years, is that the corporate jet services are way off. But they assured us that soon after the elections are over, they will see that pick back up again. Don't know why, what the rhyme or reason is for it, but that's, that was one of the things. And they will also have a trunk or treat out there, so if anybody wants to participate in that, more than welcome. I'll have that date.
Health Department's having a trunk or treat, uh, October 31st, 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
5:00 to 7:00, okay. And I was, had an invite, and I'm pretty sure y'all got it, too. It's at the, for the Health Department Legislative Luncheon. Uh, it's at the Holiday Inn on November the 18th. Did y'all get a copy of that?
Is that for the Health Department?
Yes.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Should, well, maybe should have gotten an email, but anyway.
It was only for the President and Vice President.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Dr. Christensen from the State Health Office Officer is going to be there for that. Okay. And that's about all I have. And we are now at the Board and Commission vacancies. Do we have anybody there for the reappoint?
We don't have somebody in here soon for an interview for CVB.
Okay. Eddie?
You up for the honorary councilperson, Commissioner?
I'm sorry. You know, all these years I've been counsel, and now we're going back to commission, I can't remember, so...
I, Mr. Christian.
I.
I swear affirm that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of West Virginia, that I will work hard, that I will work hard to fulfill the responsibilities of Honorary Commissioner, which I've been appointed. Well, how about you? Congratulations.
My name is Frank Coons. I go to St. Joseph's. I'm in eighth grade.
What do you want to do?
What do I want to do? That's a good, that's a good... I have not yet decided. I do sports, I do cross country, I play tennis in the spring, I'm a first-year trumpeter in the band. I like music.
Where are you going to high school next year?
Um, I'm going to apply to St. James.
Oh, good.
Well, welcome, and if you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right.
I was going to say, if you have anything you'd like to add to the conversation, or you have any questions, just nudge Penny or HD, and they'll get my attention, and they'll yield you the floor, so... Well, thanks for coming in, and we'll get some pictures here in just a minute, but we've got a little bit more business to take care of. All right? Uh, let's see, we're a little bit behind in public hearing for WVU Hospital Petition for Close the Paper Street.
Well, we've done these before. Everything, uh... The hospital's done everything they need to do to have this public hearing. They have a verified petition. The, the street is Cabana Lane, which used to go from Tennessee over across the interstate, but when the interstate was put in, that section has not been used. The hospital owns property on both sides. Everywhere Building 3 is, I think they're going to do some construction through there and expand, and there are attorneys here that could probably expound on that. Just open it up for a public hearing. I don't think we have too many members of the public to come to.
Well, you got Richard Morrison.
What am I doing? I can't hear a word in a sentence.
This is, this is a public hearing, and it'll be open to the public to discuss the closing of a paper street that goes, it's Cabana Street, that is in, um, that is on the hospital property. And if anybody from the public would like to make a comment?
We got open a public hearing.
I just did. Oh, no motion, okay. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Public hearing is now open. So does anybody from the public have any comments or questions about the paper street?
It's you, Richard, you're the public.
Yes, sir, and I'm totally in favor.
Okay. I am so glad you are here today.
Parking to the water there?
Yeah, come on up. Give us a little bit of detail about it.
I can't disclose too many things. I'm Shannon George, by the way, it's nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Um, but the plan is to, so this, it's MOB 3, and then there's this random strip of property, which is Cabana Lane, separating that from the adjacent vacant property there. So once we get ownership of all of it, we will be able to expand, which may include additional parking, a parking structure, some different things like that. So we've got a lot of stuff in the works, but parking is definitely at the forefront of everyone's mind. We understand that there are struggles over there, so that should be addressed, so, thanks. That's all.
When my wife had to go to the emergency room, she had to park in the overflow lot and walk into the emergency room.
Yes, it is a challenge, for sure. There is always extra parking at MOB 3 for non-emergent matters, but a lot of times people like to take the very close parking. But so there are definitely plans, and so this is kind of getting us in line to, to execute those plans.
Are you going to build a walkway across Tennessee Avenue?
That has been discussed. I don't know everything that will actually come to fruition, but that's definitely been discussed, for safety purposes, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard a bridge, perhaps.
Yes, that's, yes, yes, for safety, so...
Last time I had that walk, it was about 4:30 in the morning with a kidney stone.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Passed three of them that morning.
I think increased shuttles are probably needing to happen as well, so I wouldn't have had to walk, maybe we could just ask you.
That was okay. Once, I think the walk, it probably did make...
I've also heard a six, six-pack of beer can help with that as well. I had a high school teacher tell me, when he got one, that's what he would do, so...
I drank a six-pack. Better solution, drink shots of vinegar.
Oh, okay.
Glad you said vinegar.
That's all we have.
Okay, well, all righty. If there's no other public comment, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Now I need a motion to approve the order to close the paper street.
So move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries, the street is now paper closed.
The paper street is now paper closed?
Now, paper street is now paper closed. All righty. Will, you are on the, on the tape now, so it's all yours.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have two estate hearings this morning. First is the estate of Sandra K. Roberts. Ms. Roberts passed away intestate, that is, without a will, on March 19th, 2023. Three months later, a Mr. Shad Roberts, the decedent's son, came into our office to qualify as administrator for the estate on June 23rd, 2023, being assessed a corporate surety bond for $20,000 from Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America via Smith, Naden, Bush Insurance of Martinsburg, West Virginia. Martinsburg Code, Chapter 44114, requires an administrator slash executor to file an appraisement of an estate probate and non-probate assets, including real estate, tangible property, cash, bonds, stocks, bank accounts, et cetera, and failure to do so timely, that is, within 90 days from the date of qualification, makes the administrator a violator of his fiduciary duties on spec. The deadline for filing said appraisement for this case was September 21st, 2023. Today, we stand one year, one month, and four days since that deadline has passed. No appraisment has been filed. No notice in writing has been requested for additional time for filing said appraisement. From where our office stands, no probate action has taken place regarding the instant matter. In assigned writing dated August 30th, 2024, again, more than 14 months since the administrator qualified to handle the estate, Ms. Nicole R. Wall/Nicole Roberts, uh, the decedent's only other heir and the administrator's sister, requested for the administrator's removal, and this hearing was scheduled. Without any objection from a interested party in the audience, I ask for this commission's consideration in removing Shad Roberts as administrator for the estate of Sandra K. Roberts.
Shad Roberts is...
Shad Roberts is the administrator.
Yeah.
He is the decedent's son who initially qualified, but has since qualification done nothing.
Is he aware of this procedure?
He is very much so aware, yes.
And he has expressed no defense, or...
There, uh, no defense in writing was filed by him to my office prior to this hearing, and he received the hearing notice.
Any other comments, questions? Will? Need a motion, I guess it's to remove Shad Roberts?
That is correct.
Do we appoint, then, Sandra?
So typically in these matters, what I like to do is give kind of a, a...
Temporary?
A temporary period, just removing him immediately, the, the code requires that for Mr. Roberts' bond to be removed, the $20,000 bond, he needs to file what's called an interim settlement of accounts. So I like to give him a little bit of time to at least identify what assets there are within the estate and what, if anything, he's done with them.
Right, okay. With that being said, do I have a motion to remove Shad Roberts as the executor of the estate of Sandra K. Roberts? Have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries.
I will have an order for both of these before end of business today, and that'll be on public record.
Sounds good.
Uh, next, we have the estate of Sarah Hux Townsend. Ms. Townsend passed away on November 4th, 2023, again, a resident of Berkeley County. On September 23rd, 2024, my office was presented a copy of the will for the decedent's estate, and instructed the family immediately to conduct a diligent search for the original. As this commission knows, the rebuttable presumption in West Virginia is if an original will cannot be found, then that is due to the original's destruction. However, a petitioner may rebut this presumption by seeking to leave from this commission to accept the copy in solemn form. As such, the decedent's daughter, Robin Townsend, and named executor in the copy of the will, petitioned this commission's acceptance of her mother's will as a copy after the original could not be found. Uh, with that...
It's a he, by the way, Robinson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah.
With that and without objection from any interested party in the audience, I ask for the commission's consideration to accept the copy of the will of Sarah Hux Townsend in solemn form for probate.
Okay, you've heard the ask, so do I have a motion to accept the will in solemn form, as a copy of the will in solemn form?
So move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. It has been done.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
All righty. Uh, let's see, uh, just in time for a break, and we'll get some pictures with our honorary councilperson. Commissioner, sorry, we're on break.
Well, we're a little bit early. I'm going to move on down to 10:55. Mr. Wine, I want to do a letter of support for Comcast.
Gladly.
bid applications.
Yes, sir. So as the commission will recall, a few weeks ago, you signed a letter of support for Frontier for their efforts and application to the state's bead broadband program. You are in receipt of the same request from Comcast for the same letter of support from, for their application to be. There's no, there isn't any commitment. You're literally just signing a letter that says you support Comcast and their efforts to apply for these, this program to support broadband growth in Berkeley County, if you so choose.
All righty. You've heard asked, do I, can I get a motion to approve the authority to sign the document?
So moved.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Access Strategies contract renewal.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, if you'll recall, last year you went out to bid for lobbying and legislative services. You had previously done it back in 2020 and exhausted the three-year contract you had with the organization. So you went back out to bid. You had one receipt that was access strategies. They offered you a five-year agreement with, to renew once a year. The contract expires the end of November. The ask is if you so choose to continue that relationship, no change in the contract whatsoever. The exact same cost. It's $192,000 annually billed monthly and $16,000 with expenses not to exceed $24,000. You had, and one of the reasons I have it in front of you now is it's that time of year where you need to start to prioritize and get ready for your legislative summit and kind of what you want to do. So we just wanted to make sure that it was in the committee or it was on the commission's mind. You had the directions to do the same thing. So if you do and you want to move forward, we'll start the meetings and get priorities in place.
Sounds good. Can I have a motion to approve the renewal contract for access strategies?
I move.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd just like to take a minute and, Eric, explain to the, basically to the public that it is a lot of money. Okay, I don't think anybody can dispute that. However, the return that we've had since employing that agency has been tremendous. And we've been able to see firsthand the work that's been done. And what most people don't understand about this is that the rest of the state is where we don't have that communication with. We don't know those people. We don't know the other senators and delegates. I can pass them in the hallway and not even know them, and then come to find out that's the person I needed to talk to. So with this service that we're provided, we're able to get in front of the people that basically control the House and the Senate. And without that, we're in the dark. So just last year alone, and the public has been asking for this, and we've tried to get it done and could not. But last year alone, them allowing this county to install impact fees on new construction is a tremendous win and will have great returns. So that's why I have no problem making this motion.
Very good.
Any other comments?
I was just wondering, and Richard maybe can lighten this. Do you know if the governor has any input with access, oh, the, the proposed governor has any access to access strategies or is familiar with them?
I'm afraid I can't answer that. We would never come up in discussion with that. As the Attorney General, no, I don't think so.
I was, I was just wondering.
I'm separated from that, so I don't know.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was just curious.
Regardless of who's governor, access strategies will certainly reach out to them.
Yeah, I think they will. I didn't know if there was a history there or not.
I'm sure with the chief of staff or something like that, if it's needed.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's not afraid to make that call or knock on the door.
In fact, you know, in this case.
I think it's expected.
Someone had really a great relationship with Abraham, so, and who's chief of staff of government justice. So I know she can pick up the phone call and talk to him anytime.
Okay. All righty, we had the motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. A bit of word for the commission audit.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, as you'll recall, you did distribute, per the guidelines of the auditor's office, packets for bids from approved prospective auditors for your fiscal year 2223. And you received two, one from Perrin Associates in the amount of $29,475, one from BHM CPA Group in the amount of $29,200. Per your approval, you established an audit committee. The audit committee met. They actually have forms and they're in there, scoring forms that we just follow the rules of what the auditor gives. The weighted measures and all of the efforts that apply, BHM was, is what the audit committee is, is requesting the commission approve. They scored the highest. So with the $29,200 and the 8% administrative fee payable to the auditor's office, it's a total of $31,536.
All righty, you've heard the information in the ask. I have a motion to award the audit to Perrin Associates CPAs out of Marietta, Ohio.
No, sir.
No, sir, I'm sorry. BHM, I'm sorry. Correction. BHM CPA Group out of Huntington, West Virginia.
That's the same group that had, we had last year. We were very pleased with the results of that audit. So. I would make a motion that we hire them again to do the audit issue.
BHM CPAs, and have a motion in a second?
And the president's authority sign the contract.
Yeah, president, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. All righty, and where are we at?
Building.
Building, yep. For the building commission audit.
The same process as before. This is for the building commissions audit. This one is actually a two-year contract priced accordingly. You received two bids, one from Perrin Associates in the amount of $10,500 for both, and BHM CPA Group in the amount of $9,400. The audit committee again met, scored accordingly, and we are recommending if the commission so chooses to award that to BHM also. It's $9,400 with the 8% administrative fee to the auditor's office totaling $10,150.
All righty, you've heard the ask and the information to award the bid to BHM CPA Group out of Huntington for the building commission audits. Have a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a, have a motion and a, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a couple of them. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. And we don't, still a little bit early. Let's, let's give Tasha a little bit longer time. We'll just take a quick break.
All right.
A minute. Oh, she's here. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Tasha, good to have you. Hi, come on up. I'm sorry. Oh, don't be nervous, please.
Hi, Mr. Whitaker.
Mr. Whitaker, I mean, I'll, I'll correct you right now. That was my dad.
Okay.
My name is Jim. You can see it right there.
All right, nice to meet you, sir. And hi, everybody. Hi, Penny. Nice to meet you in person.
Hello.
Hi there. Hi, James, Edgar, Steven, Gary.
What we have is just a very informal interview, and I got your name from Charlie and sent you out the information, and we really appreciate you applying. And we just have a couple of questions that we'll probably ask you in relationship to wanting to serve on the airport authority.
Okay, amazing. I'm really not good at public speaking, so if you don't mind, I got a notebook.
Believe it or not, I'm not either. So I can, I can speak a lot, but I don't know if it's public or not. Please don't be nervous. But HD, if he has a question, we'll start with HD. And if he has any questions for you, then we'll, we'll go from there.
Why don't we let her tell us?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, awesome. All right, well, I currently am a HR business partner for Gold Bell Incorporated, which is an ANC, which is an Alaskan native corporation out of Juneau, Alaska. I don't know how many people are familiar with ANC's. They developed out of something called the Alaskan Native Claim Settlement Act, which is one of the largest, I think, land settlement acts in U.S. history. The settlement gave tribes land, particularly most of the land is in Juneau area, and they use that, they use that land to develop property and businesses. So I work for one of those ANC's. I think the largest one that people know about is Chenega. We're nowhere near as large as Chenega, but we're getting there. And so they have, in Juneau, they have something called the tram, which is one of their largest moneymakers out there. They capture a lot of tourists. On the East Coast, they do a lot of federal government contracting for like DOD, FDA, DOS, and DOD. And so I support the, I support the business as the HR generalist. I support with a lot of collective bargaining agreements, full-time employees, part-time employees, individuals that are on contracts under the Service Contract Act, temps. And that, it goes for people from the East Coast to West Coast, U.S. territories, and military bases outside of the U.S. And so I get a lot of government contracts. I need, and basically I have to review those government contracts that we get and advise the LLCs that I support how to hire, like what, you know, FLSA status that they're going to hire them on. I look at the budget, see exactly, do they have the money? Did they price the, did they make the right price, did they price it right when they're letting the government know how much money they need based on the contract negotiations they have, in a nutshell? And then I, you know, I also have a hand in developing the policies for the organization. So the handbook policy, I train the managers. I also work with the directors and the presidents when it comes to helping them manage their personnel matters.
You're a busy person.
I'm employed.
Yes, you are. But wow, that's, that's quite a, quite a handle to have to hold on to, so. But HD, any?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, I'd like to thank you for applying, and you know, it's sometimes hard to fill some of these boards because they're volunteer-based. They're not paid positions, and we appreciate everybody who comes out and applies for these. And one question, you, you work from home? Or do you have a home base for, for where you work? You know, you say they're based out of Alaska, so is there headquarters in DC? Is it here in Martinsburg or?
Okay, so yeah, the, the headquarters is actually in Juneau, Alaska. I do work from home 100% of the time. There, the, the Center for Excellence, which is where they do, the, the Center of Excellence, which is where the majority of the overhead is, is located in Herndon, Virginia. So we were working in Herndon, Virginia until, of course, COVID. And then after that, we just went straight, you know, working from home. And my boss, who is the HR director, was like, well, you all can stay there.
Made it pretty nice then, didn't it?
Yes, it's, I definitely do not want to do that drive.
Yeah, I don't blame you. I used to do it, so.
So what's your best interest in the airport authority? What brings you to want to be on the airport authority?
I'm glad you asked. I am, I'm a, I'm a member of this community, and so is my husband. We do a lot of volunteer work. For me, I would, I'm really interested in how the airport authority best serves the people of Martinsburg. What's going on there? Right, I want to know. I, I want to know. I want to know, in addition to not wanting to know how the airport authority best serves the public. I would like to know if we know, you know, what we, what can be done to increase awareness and, you know, charter awareness for, for what can be done there. I know that the aviation industry, it, the aviation industry needs a lot of employees right now. They're kind of in a deficit, right? When it comes to trying to find people there. And I was wondering, you know, how I could help, how I could pull, like, bridge that gap. And I believe I could be effective in that area when it comes to also increasing funds, government grants. I do know that right now there's a, there is a traffic controller grant out. I do know that right now there's a, there is a traffic controller grant out, and I believe there was like a bipartisan, a bipartisan infrastructure grant, not a grant, but the bipartisan infrastructure, I'm aware of that, that, that also included airports now, airport infrastructure. And, and I believe that I could increase funding for the airport if given the opportunity to.
Wonderful.
Always a need for that. Anything else, HD?
No, she sounds like she's highly qualified and has some, you know, aspects that she could bring to the table for the Airport Authority for sure.
Mr. Barnhart?
What skills do you have to provide to the airport? Are you accountant, or eligible for grants? Do you fly? Have you ever been to the airport?
I, I've been past the airport, I've been to a lot of airports, I've been past this airport. So I, so thank you for asking me that. So when it comes to grants, I have never written a grant, I do have a lot of resources to write grants. So if I given the opportunity, I could definitely write grants. I know how to research. Like I said, my, my primary job is reviewing contracts all day long and finding and looking at money, like adding things up, seeing how they work, seeing how it works for the company. And I'm quite sure if I do that and I get paid for it, I could do it for free and I get, and I have access to all the resources that are needed to write grants, because I am aware that that's a big part of what's needed here.
You're aware that the airport is shared?
So I know that one of the, I don't, I didn't know that it was shared. What I do know is that the Air National Guard is one of the largest tenants of that airport, and we, we definitely want to get more tenants in there, I would imagine, to get more money.
It's a heavy lift to try to convince somebody to bring their plane there to keep it stored and protected, because in relationship, you can take a plane anywhere, but you know, to make sure that the person or the customer that you're trying to help understands all the facilities that, so, and the, what we can offer for them, but I'll just get to later on, but anyway. Steve, questions?
Well, my, my question was why the Airport Authority, and Commissioner Boyd already took care of that, and you explained yourself very well.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your willingness to serve and help us any way you can, and appreciate you coming forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
It was good to meet you too.
Likewise.
Penny?
Quite honestly, I'm, I'm pretty impressed with what you do and, and your ideas, your business development ideas for the airport are ones that I've not heard. I'm sure that Nick Neal, who's the Director there, is probably, you know, constantly trying to find funds, but most of the folks that we've had that come before us have an aviation background and a love for flying, not so much a business background such as yours. And I think, you know, if that opportunity arises, I don't know if there's openings or not, but to me, it, I think that they need folks who have that business background. I do have a question, do you have, do you have a law degree?
No, I have a master's.
Okay, because when you were describing, you were, and you, you know, you do contracts and
Yes.
Review contracts and all that, and make sure everybody's, I thought, well, maybe she has a law degree too.
No, I don't have a law degree. That's one of those duties as assigned.
But I, you know, I like the opportunities, you know, for the, for the grants, I think that's really important. And you are, you are aware already that the infrastructure bill that was passed now includes aviation, so I, I think you're on, I think you're on task here. Sounds good. Thank you for applying.
Thank you, sir.
Do you travel to Alaska?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I did, I traveled to Alaska.
Been looking for a direct flight from Martinsburg.
You know it, one day.
You know, Alaska's one place that my dad always wanted to go to, and he, we never quite made it there, but, but it's a beautiful, beautiful state, and maybe one day I'll, I'll get to, to see the beauty of our, our wonderful north. But the only question, I really don't have one, other than thank you for, for wanting to apply. Probably had a little bit of an answer when it comes to commercial flights and commuter flights out of the airport. There, the proximity for Martinsburg Airport to be a reliever from like maybe Dulles, Washington, or Reagan, and, and BWI, it's kind of a, a tough nut to crack, but we're looking more down the road of like a cargo hub. So it's, as far as passengers, you can, there's ways to do a passengers out there, but it's not the same as what you would buy a ticket and, and go to Dulles to fly out of it. Love your comments, and, and we don't usually make a decision right now. We'll be back in touch with you, and, and, but we do have openings on the, on the board, and we will most certainly let you know real soon.
Okay, thank you. I, I did have a question or two.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Okay, so, so I guess my, my biggest question for, for everyone on the board is, why did you all decide to be a part of the board?
Well, as a, as the commission president, that's where I learned how to fly airplanes. And I took edu, well, took my lessons out there when I was in high school, and I've always loved the airport, it's been in my backyard, and it was always my playground. I used to ride my bicycle from my house around the airport and watch the planes fly all day. So I, I do have a passion for it. These guys, they're not on the board, but we're all part of it, so we, we all make the board up. But, but that's my passion, so, and I've always just, just loved it out there.
Okay.
It kept me out of a lot of trouble, kept me broke, you know, when you, when you learn how to fly an airplane, it's not cheap. So if you spend all your money on an airplane to learn how to fly it, it didn't leave a whole lot for anything else, so.
Okay.
I used to go out and wash airplanes just to give her a ride. I used to help people, you know, get on the ground, scrub underneath them, get the grease off of them, and in return, they would take me a ride.
That was kind of them.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Was your question directed towards why we decided to run for commission and serve?
You know, I, I realized when I looked at the name tags that Larry, or Chip, or, no one was here when I said that, and I just blurted it out, please forgive me.
Oh, no, it's okay.
We'll call them audible. But yeah, I, I would, I'm curious to know, like, you know, what, if anyone, you know, two, three bullet points of, you know, what made you?
I served as a park director in Martinsburg, I came for 45 years and retired, and I, I, I ran to try to preserve the quality of life here in Berkeley County while we continue to grow at a rapid pace, so that's my main focus.
All right, thank you. Gary?
I work for them.
He's our county administrator.
I'm not elected.
And he does a wonderful job for us, so.
Thank you.
I've spent, I spent my whole life here in emergency services, 32 years with the City of Martinsburg Fire, and 10 years with Berkeley County Fire, and retired as Chief of Berkeley County Fire. I love this place, there's not a better place on the face of the earth to live, and my, my expertise is in public safety, and that's where, that's where my strongest suit is. I love taking care of people when there are problems, trying to solve problems, pretty much.
Thank you. James?
I've worked for the Berkeley County Board of Health for 40 years, retired from there, and just continued what I was doing for 40 years. My term is up, you won't see me after December, but it's been a great ride, and I've been glad to help people and move the county along.
I'm a business owner here in Berkeley County and a resident of downtown Martinsburg, so this is the district that I represent. Even though this is a county commission, I sat on the city council for a while to help, not because I wanted to be a politician, but to help build the community and try to get things going in the right direction. And while serving over there, I saw there wasn't a good bond between the county and the city, working together on things. And so there I tried to push that agenda some, didn't get a long way, and I ran for mayor, didn't succeed, but I volunteered at the Roundhouse. I've been a volunteer there for 10 years. I've helped develop that project, get an elevator and steps, get a bathroom, now HVAC and the Bridge and Machine Shop, and we have really developed that into a business, the farmer's market. I lobbied in Charleston to get money from state agriculture to build the farmer's market there and build a, a presence at the Roundhouse, which I think is a hub of Martinsburg and downtown Martinsburg. And, and so with that being said, opportunity came for this seat, and I thought if I could get in here, I could help develop that further and help the whole community, and maybe to tie the, once again, the county and the city together to get projects rolling in the right direction. And I'm not gonna say I did it, but we work much better now with the new people we have together here, and we are working with the city on things, and it's saving money for the county and the city, and a lot more projects of quality of life, like Steve speaks of, and, and different things have, have started to come together. And I think we're starting to see an emergence of more downtown businesses coming in, and the growth of Main Street. And, you know, also, I, I, I serve with the CVB, and I'm an advocate to bring in tourism and things of that nature, and, and regards to film markets and, and bringing films and, and films and filmmakers bring tax dollars and out-of-state dollars, which then in turn are money we can spend within our community and, and business in our local businesses. So I'm not a politician, I'm a business owner and someone who want to develop where I grew up and, and make it a better place, so that's why.
Thank you, HD. Penny? All right.
Penny is the clue that holds us all together, so.
Thank you.
She, we don't, we don't praise her enough, but I'll take the time to thank her and the whole staff in this organization of our county government. And we're here at the will of the people, but they're here to, to do all the serving.
All right, well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice morning.
Uh huh, thank you. Alrighty, we do, we do have an executive session, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask for any items from the public. Come on up, state your name for the record and speak your piece.
I like you so much. So, good morning, my name is Constance Hyatt. Constance Hyatt, that's H-I-E-T-T.
You can bend that down.
Thank you. Give me one minute, I just have my notes. Okay, so the reason why I'm here today, basically I'm just asking for a meeting, to change the meeting once a month, where we have it at 6:00 PM, and study through the day, because what I come to find out, I got a lot of DMs stating that they can't come because they work, which is true. They can't afford to take off because of, we know their rent control is very high right now. So on that aspect, I'm wanting to see if you would change once a month, 6:00 PM, to see how it would go. That's why I'm here today.
Yeah, we spoke a little bit before, and, and, you know, we used to do those meetings, actually throughout the county, and the attendance wasn't there, but I'm, I don't know about my counterparts, but I'm willing to, to make adjustments and change again, so.
Yeah, just to see how it goes, you know.
Sure.
People will always run and run their mouth, and this is me saying it, not anybody from the board, but a lot of people want to quickly jump out there, but nobody wants to show up. In order to change things better, we must show up as a team, unite what is important. We're all off balance right now because of the world is upside downwards, but in order to make change, we must show up. So if they're willing to give us a chance at 6:00 PM, once a month, then we need to show up. This is called being humble. Even though I know the world is upside downwards, we all want to change the action. In order to change to come as a community here in Berkeley County, we must get along, and we must come at 6:00 PM when they give us this date in order to get our points and views across respectfully to the community. And that's why I'm here today. So I'm hoping that everybody will give us all a chance, once a month at 6:00 PM, and if people don't show up, they really cannot say anything, because you tried. And that's all we can do is try.
We will schedule one, if we all come to an agreement of a date for, for an evening, and then we'll have it on the agenda, we'll get it posted, and we'll make that happen.
All right, thank you so much, thank all of y'all. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we do have an executive session, no action to be taken for legal matters. So I need a motion to go into executive session. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, we are in executive session.